Good evening, and welcome to the December 4th meeting of the Des Moines City Planning and Zoning Commission. I will start by reading our rules and procedures. The Planning and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the city council. Council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the commission, other than site plans and subdivision plots unless denials or conditional approvals thereof are appealed. The applicant will be given 10 minutes to present the request. Proponents and then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. The applicant is then allowed five minutes for rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, unless an individual present or a member of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. First, could we have a motion to approve the minutes from our previous meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Any abstentions? Thank you. And then, item number one, the applicant has requested to continue this item to the December 18th meeting. Could we, do I need to read it to the record?
I just need to make sure that our one audience member, you're not here for item one, just want to make sure.
Okay.
Then probably don't need to.
Fair enough. Could we get a motion to continue item number one to 1218?
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes and we'll move on to number two. Item two is a request from MFF Land Fund, Inc. for review and approval of a public hearing site plan for property located at 1202 Fraser Avenue and for a type 2 design alternative in accordance with city code to allow a house size of 720 square feet where a single-story house without a full basement shall be a minimum of 1,200 square feet per city code. And Jasmine is going to present this this evening.
I apologize, we didn't notice that before.
I'm at level, so.
Yeah.
That's probably the reason why I am this.
Good thing we don't have much of an audience to be.
I'm nervous to move it now. Okay, there we go. Good evening, commissioners, Jasmine Kamani, planning staff. Tonight we have a request for a type 2 design alternative to allow a 720-square-foot, single-story house without a full basement, where a minimum house size required is 1,200 square feet. This property is located in the Watcher South Neighborhood Association, south of Yeder Creek, north of Kenyon Avenue, between Southwest 9th Street and Southwest 14th Street. Staff has analyzed the existing homes on Fraser Avenue, with the majority of the homes being split-level or single-story ranch homes. Of the homes being, averaging of the home sizes along this street, on this block, is approximately 898 square feet. Currently proposed is that 720-square-foot, single-story, two-bed, one-bath on slab. If staff is to approve a design alternative for a home lesser than the required square footage, the proposed home should at least be set up for future homeowner's success through some sort of expansion or addition or the opportunity to expand. For example, an addition of a garage, whether attached or detached, would likely be in the southeast corner, opposite of the proposed entrances to the patio and the front door. Any additions to the current floor plan or the proposed floor plan would require interior reconfiguration in order to expand that, since the footprint would not easily be expandable with the current proposed. Again, staff believes in setting up the home for the future homeowner, therefore recommending denial of the proposed type 2 design alternative. Staff does support a continuation if applicant would like to propose a modified house design. I do want to share some comments that we did receive via email. We had a couple come in, one of them being against it if the, this lowered the value of the property, her property. The adjacent homeowner, homeowner at 1204, it's the one just west of this property, they had some concerns about the neglected state and the safety of the property, but generally was supportive of the development. And it looks like, I got a last-minute one that's not shared here with us, but the other side of it, east-side neighbor, had requested offense. They also had some concerns about some squatting on the property, so both, both property owners to the sides of them had concerns about some of the existing conditions of the site.
Jasmine, could you go back to the slide with the, the floor plan? And just, just zoom in so the commission can see it, because I think that helps convey what, what, what you were discussing about just setting up a future owner for success on, you know, the ability to expand this in the future, whether that's an addition or with a garage to the rear.
Yeah, so this side, this side would be the driveway here. They have their front, front door and then they have a porch to the side. And then, going in to the home, you have the two bedrooms on the side with the laundry kind of in that middle section here. So in order to do any alterations or expansions, they would have to reconfigure essentially bedroom, or if they were to do like an attached garage, they would have to figure a way into that garage from the side, just essentially not setting up an easy, easily available for the future homeowner.
Right, or relocate the laundry room too.
So if you did not want the garage attached, you could still walk outside to the garage like normal, like most houses on this side of town?
You could. You can walk around to your, to your garage. I would say most people prefer to be a little bit more convenient, but preference.
So I think what we're trying to say is, if you go to the site plan, so the patio door, which, you know, might, you might think of as your shortcut to the backyard, is on the opposite side of the driveway, so. I mean, we were just trying to point out that the challenges of adding on, whether that's a garage, or just, you know, just the layout of the prop, you know, the house, the layout of it is not conducive to thinking about like the future, whether that's garage is being constructed in the backyard and you want easy access to it, whether that's a future owner adding on living space. Again, our thought process is really about setting up that future owner for success. It's less about the square footage. Our concern's more about just how it's laid out.
Could you, could you just mirror the house, so that the, like, would that satisfy?
I think that would be, I think that would be a, the minimum thing to do, would be to slide the house over a little bit.
Doesn't look to me like there's room width-wise for a garage addition with setback.
You don't think you'd get a garage in every yard?
Oh, in the.
I, I, I'm guessing, most likely, it's gonna have to be in a detached garage, because it's least expensive.
And then the patio, if the, if the slider was on the right side?
Yeah, I mean, I think at a minimum.
Then you could at least walk in from that side.
Right, right. You would need to slide the house over so that you have some space between the driveway and the house.
I guess, sequence-wise though, so the, because we have open discussion later, right? But I mean, isn't the, so right now, the clarification though is that we're, we're opposed to this because we don't like the look of it, but it's on the grounds, it's too small for minimum sizing with no basement? Is that the logic?
Staff is able to approve of a 1,000-square-foot home?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, Jasmine, you're just giving perspective as to, like, what's eligible for administrative relief versus coming here, but this is before the commission for relief to be, you know, less than the standard. It gives us an opportunity to look at it closely, and I think that we should be making sure that we're setting up a future owner up for success. Success of, you know, I think it's highly likely a garage gets constructed someday. It's quite possible that somebody will want to build an addition someday, and so part of the idea of having a set amount of square footage in your, in, in these houses as a starting point is to make sure that they're, you're setting that owner up for success, that property after long-term success. So we're just trying to carry that forward thinking through to here. Provide flexibility in the square footage, but let's just think about the design layout a little bit.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff right now?
Just to clarify, we are looking at the type 2 design alternative for the square footage, right?
Right.
So if we were to approve the square footage, the design is still change from now until...
Yeah, and that, I mean, that's why we had, there's a couple ways, we'd actually recommended denial and had encouraged the applicant, which, we still haven't heard from the applicant, but we'd said we would support continuing it and they could come back with a new floor plan or new design. You know, the alternative would be that the commission, if you wanted, if there's things that you knew you wanted, you could make that as part of your motion, you could do a conditional approval that's, you know, is subject to it being mirrored, or having a door on the side, or have, you know, some sort of adjustment. So there's some different ways around it to, to avoid what you're getting at.
I had one clarification. You mentioned the average house size in this area, but I missed what the number was. Could you repeat that?
898, and that was an analysis done of the 33 homes that are facing Fraser Avenue. They do range, I will say, significantly. There's only a handful that are under a certain number, I think the smallest being around 400, but it does have a basement, about 120 square feet, all the way up to 1,500 square feet. The, about five that are a little less than, it all kind of starts at 840 square feet and then up.
Thank you. Applicant, are you, sorry, you? Okay, please come forward. State your name and address for a record. You have up to 10 minutes, and then sign in on that white sheet when you're done.
Okay, I'm Mike Faust, I'm with MFF Land Fund, Inc. Address is 2600 72nd Street, Suite A, Urbana, Iowa 50322. I'm just gonna start off, good evening to everybody here, city staff, the members of the board. My name's Michael Faust, owner of MFF Land Fund, Inc. For the past 28 years, I've been in building and remodeling homes in central Iowa. Tonight, I'm asking for your approval and consideration for a type 2 design alternative from the minimum dwelling size requirement, so we can construct a new quality-built, 720-square-foot single-family home on the vacant lot at 1202 Fraser. If this was from a variant standpoint, we believe the hardship is real and we can meet every legal test with regards to 1202 Fraser. Number one, given the unique physical conditions of the property, this is a narrow 49-foot-wide infill lot surrounded by homes built similarly, on similarly narrow or non-conforming parcels. Poor soil conditions in the immediate area may require expansive, expensive overexcavation along with engineered foundations. Combined with the required setbacks, lock coverage limits, and a one-car garage and code-compliant 1,100-square-foot house becomes physically and financially impractical on this site, given current market conditions and immediate comparable properties in the general vicinity. Number two, we believe the hardship is not self-created, as the lot was plotted decades before the 2019 zoning change, and when the dramatic, with the dramatic 46% rise in construction costs since August of 2019. These increased construction costs have in essence made the 2019 zoning size standards incompatible with today's market realities and market valuations. Number three, we also believe the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The proposed, the proposed home is a modest, well-crafted bungalow with a covered front porch, hardy or LP siding, no vinyl siding, appropriate roof pitch, architectural asphalt shingles, along with other architectural details that match the surrounding early 20th century homes in the immediate vicinity. This 720-square-foot home, in essence, will replace a constrained vacant lot into a new home investment that is affordable and high-demand, with architecture that will blend in harmoniously with the surrounding homes in the neighborhood. Number four, we believe this is the minimum variance necessary. At 720 square feet, the home provides sufficient, modern, two-bedroom living space while remaining affordable. The design already includes future expansion options for growing families, and there are many, many homes within the general vicinity that are currently at or below that square footage requirement. Regardless of the above, and because staff has correctly classified this request as a type 2 design alternative under Section 134.344E, only question for you is whether our proposal meets the intent of the zoning ordinance and provides an equal or better outcome than strict compliance with the 1,100-square-foot minimum standard. We believe it clearly does, and here's why. Given the current lot and grading and soil constraints, the 720-square-foot home is a better, is better suited to this narrow 49-foot-wide infill lot in lieu of a house with a larger footprint as required by zoning ordinance. Allowing a smaller type home will increase green space between the neighbors and create affordability of the likes that the city has not seen in years, all while allowing for future expansion of the home by the future owner. This home delivers superior architecture and craftsman-style bungalow, again, with a 15-by-5 covered front porch, hardy LP siding, good, nice roof pitch, and details that match that, the surrounding neighborhood. It includes built-in future expansion options, which have been shown, which for those who were emailed yesterday to city, and I have copies for everybody if they want to see three options of how this floor plan could be expanded, with an attached garage, with a detached garage, with a three-bedroom, with a four-bedroom, or just expandable living space in its own. Most importantly, it creates the exact kind of attainable entry-level ownership or future ownership the city says that it's missing. It's something that is becoming nearly impossible under the strict square-foot rule in today's construction cost environment. This, this quality home, 720-square-foot home, turns a vacant, weed-covered, problem lot into a brand-new, energy-efficient home with a new taxpayer and an increased property revenue for the city. This is precisely the type of flexible, common-sense solution the type 2 design alternative process was created to allow. To conclude, since 2019 zoning update went into effect, the city of Des Moines has demolished approximately 350 older, naturally affordable homes, homes that can never be replaced at their original price point. We are not asking for a subdivision or a blanket rule change. All we are asking for is one thoughtfully-designed home on one uniquely-constrained lot. Approving this type 2 design alternative will allow a first-time homebuyer or a downsizing household to own-lease a brand-new, energy-efficient home in a great neighborhood, something that is becoming almost impossible under the current rules. It will add property tax value, tax revenue, eliminate a vacant lot, and prove that, that Des Moines can still say yes to attainable, truly affordable homeownership. I respectfully ask for your approval of this type 2 design alternative for 1202 Fraser. I have site plans, I have elevations, I have, I have rough drafts available, and I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Any questions for the applicant? Please.
Can I pass these out? You guys, you can. Yeah, actually, why don't you show it on the, on the document camera, and then you can walk the commission through it? I think it'd be more effective.
I guess, I don't even know how this thing works.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna help you.
So what we have here is option one. I know we have a lot of people on staff here, I'm a carpenter by trade, I've been in the home-building business for 28 years. What we have here is not something that makes or breaks any homeowner from being able to expand or achieve an expansion or an addition on this home. This is just one quick option I threw out there. The reason we have a hallway right there, well, the first thing to say is, the reason we want to do this is, you know, we're not looking for government subsidies, we're not looking for, you know, any help from city or, you know, taxpayers to build this thing. This is self-funded. That's our plan, that's our goal behind these things. There's a true opportunity here for the city of Des Moines to, you know, not look through a narrow lens on just square footage, like, it's, and it's easy to do because of the 2019 zoning changes. It's 720 square feet, a lot of people look at that and go, oh, we don't want to do that. That's, A, it's not gonna create enough tax revenue, B, they're just too small, but these are really popular homes. People need these. I mean, it's not something where people don't want these kind of homes, it allows them to grow into them over time, which allows them to add additions, which creates more revenue for the city, allows them to add garages, which creates more revenue for the city, and I think, I think it's a good option, given the considerations of this specific lot. For example, so I mean, you can't really see here, but all you have to do to change this setup, you have addition right on the back here, remove that washer and dryer, and that adds two more bedrooms if, if a client really wanted to. They could have, they could take this right here and move the laundry here, you know, easy. What would that add to square footage? Oh, I don't know, 300, 400 square feet, maybe, in the future. Option two, the same thing, very simple. Remove the laundry, we make this into a master bedroom right here. This becomes a covered deck area here, all with the same roof line profile. And then what happens here is, this turns into the second closet over here, this turns into a laundry area over here, this becomes a hallway with a side door for your garage over here, if you can come off the side, and, you know, the master bathroom, right there. That's an option. You could put an attached garage on it, you could actually move this, according to city building code, if it's not attached to the house, we can move within the building setback line for that patio on this side, if it's concrete. We could do that, we could move this house over to the right, this would give you, you have an eight-foot and a seven-foot side yard setback that's required by, you know, for this specific lot. Right now, we have five extra feet here, it could allow you to put a single-car garage if you wanted to attach it, which would then attach to a hallway, which would attach to your hallway here to get you into the main part of the house, and would also get you into your master bedroom, a covered deck in the future. Again, if you didn't like that option, you could do any of these three options and still have a two-car detached garage behind it. So I think there's a lot of options you can do with this plan. I mean, is it, it's not what you normally see. I know, I know everybody wants to go in here and see these brand-new houses that are 1,200 square feet. I've been building these houses since, since 2004.
Yeah, Jason, did you?
Yeah, I had just a quick question. And I don't think any of our comments were about the square footage. I mean, one question I have for you is, if you, as you've looked at different floor plans, have you seen any, I think the biggest thing here is the laundry room, you know, like, is there, you know, if you could avoid, have to move the laundry room, is there floor plans out there that are similar square footage that are laid out where you wouldn't have to, anything that's more plumbing-related?
Not for something that's small. I mean, we're talking one pipe and one wall.
Can we for reference, the cost of moving that's like 500 bucks? I mean, this isn't a lot, is it? I mean, we're moving a laundry thing? I've done that in my house.
Right, right.
It's simple.
It's super simple, it's not the end of the world, and the thing is, I mean, some people don't want it, a lot of people in this city can't afford a 1,200-square-foot house. I mean, just for example, not to keep you going, I just want to say one thing, but real quick, is in 2019, we were building houses before pre-COVID. I could build a 1,700-square-foot, three-car garage home, sell it to a client for $349,000. That same home today is probably 550, 46% increase in construction costs have happened since 2019, here in the city of Des Moines in Bayonne. So, the square footage requirement now, as a builder, I can't build a 1,700-square-foot home for a client for $340,000. Now, I have to build a client 1,150-square-foot home with a two-car garage for $340,000. That's a 35% decrease in square footage, and we're basing your, your stuff, that's in 2025. You guys are asking for 12, 11, 1,200 square feet footprints, when square footage has decreased.
Yeah, I think tonight, I think tonight what we were asking for was just to see if you'd looked for any other floor plans where it was simpler to expand, that we're still in the same square foot range. I don't think anybody here is arguing with you about.
No, no, and I know that, but I personally like this plan, I think it has a, I mean, for, you're really, for 720 square feet, it's tough, you know? There's only so many ways you can skin a cat, per se, per se, on a, on a house that size.
What do you think about pushing it over to the property line on the side opposite of the driveway, and then sticking that patio, like, basically flipping the house so that the patio door is on the driveway side?
I mean, tech, yeah, technically, you could, yeah, you could flip it either way. I think the one thing I'm looking at is the way that lot, I don't know if any of you guys ever drove by that lot, that lot kind of goes uphill, and it kind of veers off on the side, so you could probably flip it, I don't think it would matter either way.
It sounded like, if you were to do that, then you get the patio door facing the driveway, that was gonna satisfy some of the desire for that accessibility to that side, and you might be able to sort of skate by doing that.
Why, why do you want your kids to go out the patio door and go into the driveway?
I, I don't really want my kids to do that, but if you slid the house over to the property line on that side, then you've got enough room for the patio, and then, like, some grassy space between the house and the driveway, so that's a concern, but. So that's a concern, but it might be avoidable by shifting the house one side or the other all the way to the build two.
Yeah, I mean, we have roughly, I mean, I need at least a minimum of, and, you know, staff here, you guys might have a better recommendation, but I mean, just from my experience, the minimum like driveway you'd ever want to do on a house is eight feet, and I think that's tight. I mean, you wouldn't want it any less.
I wonder if we could flip back to the document, or the computer, and then go to the site plan? That might help. Oh, there we go. Does that help, sir?
Yeah, so, I guess, yeah, so you have roughly, the way the, the way, let's see, he has it drawn on here specifically this house plan, because he's showing a five-by-five patio. So the engineer didn't know if that was gonna be an attached deck or a detached structure. So if it's an attached structure, then we have to be within the building setback line. That's those dash lines that go all the way around. But if it's concrete and we need to put a set of stairs, and the stairs are detached, which we wouldn't have stairs, because it's probably slab-on-grave, we may, then we probably wouldn't have to be within the setback line, you'd be able to shift that house either direction.
Yeah, as far as like a step, I mean, I think you could get down to five feet.
Right.
For the side yard setback for the balance, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the side yard setback currently for this lot is like eight foot and seven foot, I believe, and then like you said, we're about five feet, the house right now sits about five feet.
Yeah, but on a narrow existing lot like this, we have a lot of flexibility to adjust the setback. So I, I think in situations like this, it's pretty common for the setback to get reduced down to five, which would still allow you to have windows and stuff from a building code perspective.
Right.
Any other questions for the applicant?
So it sounds like if we grant the Type 2, you will work with city staff to resolve some of the issues.
Oh, my gosh, yes. I would love to work with you guys to figure it out. My biggest thing is I want to keep it, here's what will happen, if it gets too out of hand as far as the square footage, I mean, home building-wise, everything's based off square footage. Everybody charged me by the square.
I'm just trying to keep this from becoming a design session.
Oh, I agree.
We grant the Type 2, you work with staff so that you meet in the middle somehow.
Yeah, I mean, if there's any design things that staff really wants to, you know, do, make this thing happen, I mean, I'm all for it. I mean, if we can keep the square footage, you know, relatively in line.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right, since there isn't anyone in the audience, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
It was a consensus motion to allow for this contingent upon the design to be approved by staff, is that what you're saying?
No. Is that a motion?
Does staff have power to do that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we would assume is that the square footage is set, you know, obviously he could go above.
Yep.
But he, but he certainly would have the right to do, and that we would work with him just to kind of fine-tune how that's laid out, whether, it sounds like he's not aware of, like setbacks could be adjusted, and I think there's some opportunities to have a win, a win-win.
No, I think it's great. I mean, to create an opportunity for a family to be able to afford a home at a good price level, I think it's, it's great that there's developers doing this, not just looking for the, the big bucks, so I appreciate that. So I'd like to hear from the rest of you guys, but I'm definitely for working with them.
I'm in agreement too, so why don't you make the motion, Rick?
Ted, can you state the motion in a concise way?
I'll make a motion. I'll move to allow the Type 2 design alternative with the condition that the developer works with staff to resolve some of the minor issues we see.
Can I add a friendly amendment that the minimum square footage be seven-twenty?
You certainly can.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, motion passes, thank you. Before we close, I think Jason might have an announcement or?
I, yeah, I have a couple, a couple things to share on, under the director's report. We, so we'll be sending out additional meeting invites, I think you've got one recently that's just for the next couple meetings. We were pretty confident that we'll be at the new building and have our first meeting there with this, this group, but the second meeting in February, but until that gets a little more firm, we didn't want to like fill up your inboxes with a whole year's worth of scheduling. So look for more information on that in January. And then the other is, I think the last meeting, we talked about elections and had a subcommittee put together. I did double-check the bylaws and then what we did last year. We, we will, we need to hold the elections in January, the, the group that's, our officers now were elected this January, so, I mean, that matches the bylaws. So we'll get that on your agenda, and just remember, there's only one meeting in January because of the holiday. So that's all we got, thank you.
Okay, thank you.